Good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Tonight is Thursday, May 19th, 2022. We have one public hearing on the agenda tonight, 20 Charlton Street. Application for a variance, applicant Randall Barclay, owner Randall and Paula Barclay, installation of an 18 by 33-foot above-ground pool encroaching on the side yard and rear yard setbacks. Order of business, we need to reorganize the board tonight as the first meeting after town election. I did speak with Stephen, who's the current secretary, and he's agreed to continue in that role. So I'd ask for someone to nominate Stephen.
So moved.
Okay, second. And do we have a vote on that?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. I also spoke with David, who's currently vice chairman, and I had offered that I would be willing to step down as chairman and give anybody else that wants an opportunity. David has agreed that he would move up to chairman unless, I would open it up to the board as well, unless there's other members that would want to step into either chairman or vice chairman.
Can I move that I'd like to nominate Dave Silverman as chairman of the ZBA.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, and the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. And is there anyone else that would like to be vice chairman? Otherwise, I will.
I would make a motion to appoint Peter as a vice chair.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Second.
And we need a vote, I guess?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm staying. All right, so David, welcome. Actually, could I just say one thing? I would like to thank, I'm not sure if anybody's aware, but Dan Champagne resigned for personal reasons, and I would just like to thank him for the service that he put in, his dedication and what he contributed to the board.
Sorry to hear that. I would second that absolutely. Anyone that takes the time out of their daily schedule to assist and tend to town business deserves a lot of credit.
You're here.
All right.
So I would ask that the clerk take and read the publication notice. As I'm saying that, I'm looking for it myself.
Yeah, I'm missing it. Missing one page.
Do you don't have it?
No.
You didn't get it in your packet?
Yeah, I don't think I saw it either.
Sure.
Town of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, May 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM by the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. To consider the variance application of Randall W. Barclay for property owned by Randall Double Barclay and Paula M. Barclay located at 20 Charlton Street, Oxford, Mass. Assesses map 34C parcel A16 in the R3 Residential Zoning District. The application requested variance of the minimum side yards and rear yard setback requirements as set forth in Chapter 10, Table 4 of the Oxford zoning bylaws. To install an 18 by 33 above-ground pool and further in accordance with the Chapter 40A, Section 10 of the MGL, the application can be viewed in the office of the town clerk or land management department during normal hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, state, and time designated or submit written comments to the board before the date of the hearing. See masspublications.org for legal notice. To the applicants of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaws. Appeals: Appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within 20 days on the date or order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. A variance: In order to grant a variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Zoning Board of Appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. A) There are unique circumstances relating to the soil, conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures. That B) Especially affects such land or structures, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. That C) A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of personal nature to the petitioner or appallant. And that D) Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public, good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose of this bylaw. In accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 15 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person aggrieved by the decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for in Section 17 of said Chapter 40A within 20 days after the date of this filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you. Welcome.
Before we start, and I just go through what we have, I wanted to check with, there's a board member who indicated that he may or may not be able to take part.
I would like to step down. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to explain quickly what that means. We have four people left. You must have a unanimous decision in order to obtain your variance. If you're okay with that, we can go forward. If you're not okay with that, you could choose to go forward at a different date when there are additional individuals on the board. All right, okay. We have an application, but I would note, I'm sorry, Paula?
Yes.
You have not signed the application. The board likes to see all owners sign, so.
I don't know why I'm the one who dropped it off. I don't know why I didn't sign.
At some point, you're going to need to. Okay, thank you.
Can I have it right now?
Sure, sure. So we have a copy of your deed, we have a copy of the town map, we have a copy of the abutters list, and I note that there are no abutters present.
You sent a note from them, all right.
Well, I'll get to that. We have what appears to be an ASBILT for your, no, it's not an ASBILT. Mary, what would you?
This is a, this is an excerpt from their mortgage survey plan.
Okay, an excerpt from the plot plan, and we have the plot plan.
If, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you have a spare set? Because I didn't get my mailing.
I don't think I have a spare, but you're welcome to.
You know what, Tom?
I was just going to say I can give him.
I can use Al's.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
I'm getting confused over here looking at another address.
And we have a letter from.
Thank you.
Raymond Chudary and Marilla Sissick. And I hope, I truly hope I did not butcher their names too badly.
I call him Raymond. That's what I call him. But he's an abutter on the side that would be.
And it's a letter in support of the installation of your above-ground pool. So that being said, I'm going to turn the matter over to you guys as the applicants to provide us with whatever information you choose to.
Okay, I've never done this before. I don't know much about the, you know, how this is supposed to go.
We're not too formal.
It doesn't, yeah. So I'm not sure exactly what I would offer to you.
Why don't you explain what you're doing and why?
You got it. So we move to this, to this address.
August.
August, thank you very much. And the first things that we did was try to plan a pool to go in for. We do foster care and we have a foster kid that we're going to adopt here soon, and we wanted him to have a little pool. So anyway, or a big pool, I should say. So we planned the pool, paid for it in advance, then started thinking about what do I have to do for.
Well, first, we fenced in the yard because we thought that's what we had to do to get a pool is completely fence in the whole yard, which we did.
Yes, so the fence went up first, but I didn't think about doing this in the right order. So the bottom line is, is it's, you know, I could have been more.
So you.
A little wiser in the way that I went through this. But the bottom line is we paid for it in advance, it's already there, and he was, the plan was to install it about four weeks ago. And then decided that I needed to get a permit to do that, and we came forward, and that puts us where we are. So we're in a sort of a non-refundable situation.
And would you want to go through why you're choosing to put the pool where it is you're choosing to put it?
Yes, that's a good question. I really wanted it in the completely other part of the yard, but when we looked at the, when we got the information and we got the location of the leach field, we could not put it where we wanted to put it. It would have been right up against the leach field underneath it, right up near it. So the only way in our yard, in our plot, to get a pool this size, again, it was already purchased, into this lot 20 feet away from the leach field is to put it in that back corner of the yard. That was the only way that I could get it in and meet the leach field requirements.
Right, because we had no idea that that mattered. So we were going to put it more in the middle to be away from, you know, all the neighbors, away from the fence, away from everything. Then when we started doing this, we're like, oh, so we got to put it right there as the only spot that it meets the code to be away from everything else.
So that's how we got to where we are, and that's why we picked that location. It's not really where we want it, but it's the only way to get it away from the leach field. Okay, does that help?
Well, it's not for me to say whether it helps or doesn't help. There are members of the board that will have an opportunity to ask you whatever questions they wish. But what's important is, did you have an opportunity to convey whatever it is you wanted to convey?
I think so, yes.
Okay, then I thank you. And I'll open the matter up to the board members, Tom, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this an above-ground pool or an in-ground pool?
Above.
Okay, if I may, you have a 20-foot offset from the leach field to the pool?
Yes.
That is not the requirement for an above-ground pool?
I believe it's 25, if you look at that.
No, it's only 10 feet.
10 or 15, yeah, it's less.
It's only 10 feet, so I can happily give you information that you can move your feet, your.
Move it within 10 feet.
You can move it to 10 feet from the edge of your leach field.
Okay.
So that would center it more in the yard instead of pushing it in the corner and up against the sideline.
Well, not really in our yard it wouldn't though, because then it would still be so many feet from the tank, which is right here. You know what I mean? It's weird the way it is in our yard because the tank is here and it has to be so many feet. And the leach field is.
It only has to be.
What he's saying, though, is that I have it five foot off of the fence on that side. I could go 15 foot, I could go another 10 feet closer to the, we could go 10 foot closer to the leach field. Because I tried to keep at least, I think it was 22.
You only have to be, from the septic tank to the in-ground pool is, again, we use a standard of 10 feet.
So is it the septic tank or is it the, I'm sorry.
Both.
Okay. Or the leach field.
So then we don't even need to be here because we would not be.
And I'm looking at your septic system ASBILT here, and using the information that's here, the back line, the back line of the garage is about the same line as your septic tank.
That's correct.
Okay, so you could go 10 feet from the back line of your garage, which would still pull the pool closer to the house, and you could pull it this way off the sideline, and you probably wouldn't need a, it's a, what, 10-foot sideline and set, and rear setback?
15 side. 15 side.
I thought it was 20 from the back, 15 from the side. Yes.
Okay.
So I don't think I can meet 20 from the back even if we pull it up because the tank is in the middle of the yard.
Right.
Well, the tank, like I said, looking at the strategic, I mean, position-wise.
Yes.
Based on, I'm figuring your plan is to scale. My ASBILT sketch is to scale.
That one's to scale, mine is close.
Right. And it would put your pool still 10 feet away from the septic tank and 10 feet away from the leach field. So you're in good shape just by pulling it forward. If you take the ASBILT that came with your septic system, there's an ASBILT, there's a 2436 drawing. It's on file. If you take that and draw the 10-foot setback from the leach field, 10 feet from the septic tank, and then draw in your pool, you may find that it'll fit where you want it without any variances. Or we may be able to modify the application.
Yeah, we still wouldn't be all the way 20 feet. We still wouldn't be 20 feet from the back neighbors or 15 from the side, right?
Correct.
You would be 15 from the side.
I would. I could get the 15 from the side, but not the 20 from the back.
Not the 20 from the back.
There's that possibility.
Right, it'd still be a little bit.
That's good to know.
Talking about an improvement in the, less of, less of an insult to the property line than what you're asking for now.
Okay. So you're saying if we're looking from the back door to move it over to the right more? More to the middle of the yard?
Towards the middle of the yard, yes, away from Raymond's fence.
Yeah, it'd be better.
Tom, could you speak to why it couldn't be brought 20 feet from the rear? Are you saying because the tank would be too close to it?
The tank, it'd be within 10, it may put the tank within 10 feet of the above-ground pool. The thing we worry about with above-ground pools is when, if they do leak and they drop right into the septic system, and I've seen them blow septic systems up, literally take $20,000 or $25,000 damage.
Wow.
Yeah, they can, they overload them, hydraulically load them. And your yard's a fairly flat yard. It is a flat.
It is very flat, no trees, no bumps.
I've had one where we put them in a slope and ended up with reshuffling the septic system off the person's property next door because of a leaky pool.
So the tank, what I'm showing him is this. So the tank is kind of underneath this side, this end of the leach field?
Now, that one's got the garage on it. So if you took this one, which is the septic system ASBILT,
Yep.
and use the garage as your focal point. Okay, now, in kind of interpolate, that little, that little mark to the left, that's the septic tank.
Okay.
The leach field is that elongated one right there. Again, I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the distance is to the back line, but the 20-foot encroachment, 20-foot offset might be a, might be a problem. But the sideline, certainly we can eliminate relief to the sideline by just pulling the septic system over 10 feet.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, the applicant did mention, though, that they had already started to move things around, and I would just want to understand if this.
We can move stuff, though, right?
Nothing's dug, nothing, I can change it.
We like roped it off, we've like measured everything exactly.
Just wasn't sure if this was going to impact what they had already planned.
What I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like there may possibly be zero need for any variance of any kind.
I don't think so. I think there's still one from the back.
They would, we would not be 20 feet.
I didn't put it on this drawing, but you're right. If you take the ASBILT that you were looking at and come 17 and 18 foot on a triangle back there, it's about, it's about right here where that dot is.
Well, I think the other thing we also kind of look at is, if we're going to grant you relief from the back line, we want to give you an exact relief. We don't want to give you 15 feet of relief and find out that you only need 10 and then just go back in three years and add another five feet onto it without having to come back with a permit.
Understood.
For a permit, that's, that's my point. If we give you too much.
Leaves it open, all right.
It leaves it open to any future complaints or potential complaints.
The application appears to be premature. There may not be enough information here. With more information, you may find out that no variance at all is necessary.
What's the, the distance off the back line that's allowed with 20 feet?
But the inspector came out.
I know, that's what I'm confused about.
The inspector.
It isn't right.
But it's, it looks like to me that inspector came out and looked at where you told him you were going to put it. And he's, and he said.
We didn't know at that time.
We were going to put it behind the garage.
Yeah.
But it was too, definitely too close to the leach field.
Yeah, and we would have put it anywhere he said we could put it. This was in the early stage, you know what I mean? Like, where are we going to put the pool?
So I assumed when he disallowed our permit that.
And we, it wasn't because of the side yards, though, when he came. It was because of the backyard.
And it was the building inspector you're talking about?
I wasn't there.
Yeah, the pool guy met the building inspector there, right? Yes, yes. Because he had come to our house like a couple other times recently, so he knew the yard and knew exactly because we had air conditioning and stuff, and we had to get permits for that, and he had been there like three times in a week. So he was like, yeah, I know the yard.
If I may, I was always under the impression that a leach field, that the pool needed to be 20 feet, no matter if it was an above-ground or an in-ground. I was always under the impression that it needed to be 20 feet away.
I saw.
And I only found out two days ago that it only needs to be 10 feet away.
For an above-ground pool.
For an above-ground.
For an in-ground pool, it has to be 20 feet.
If we look at that, is there a place that we can put it that would meet it?
I can meet the side one, absolutely, based on what Mr. Purcell just said. But I am positive I'm about six feet short of meeting the 20 feet on the back. Maybe seven, I'm rounding.
I mean, I can.
Mr. Chairman, I, if this is to scale somewhat, I did try and take the 33-foot measurement of the pool and move it up to 20 feet from the back line. And it does seem on my crude drawing to come right up to that tank at least.
Yeah.
I don't know which is the tank, this or this, but it's one of those. So I mean, I hear what Tom said as well, that if we're going to grant relief, we would like a specific number. So I don't know if the applicant maybe can make a decision on where they would want it based on the belief that maybe moving it 20 foot forward would be too close to the tank. Is there an ideal location they would want it at? You know, if they are moving it over and up somewhat?
There are, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment that they can get relief from certain setbacks from the septic tank or from the leach field with, there's mechanical means to do it. We can put in what's called a Miller membrane or a plastic barrier to separate the two, to create a barrier between them. There's, there's all kinds of remedies for this.
Talking into the ground?
Yes. All it is is.
Like a dam? Like a dam?
Yeah, all we do is create a dam between them.
How far down would you go?
Well, we'd go to the bottom of the tank, which would be, they're going to be excavating anyhow, but a single trench, drop the curtain in, and then cover it up.
Sounds costly.
Yeah, how much is that?
Yeah, yeah.
We've already spent like, you don't even know how much to do a pool and a fence. With COVID, the prices are like.
If, if this were to continue, would we be able to meet again, say, next week? So we could be expeditious for the applicant?
So can we just pick somewhere right now where we would put it?
Yeah, we're a little bit up against.
Like, we'll put it wherever you want us to put it.
We're a little bit up against time because.
Well, it's not, it kind of works the other way where you say, this is where we want it, and you know.
But if he's saying move it over, we'll move it over.
Can you give me three seconds with her?
Please.
We can move it this way, make that 15, or make that 10 feet off of the side. Wasn't that the thing?
Yeah.
That actually is better, okay? And I can bring it 10 feet up, but I'm not going to go all the way up there. So if we give them an exact location that's 15 foot off the back and 10 foot off the side, and ask them for that, for that, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't care. I don't care where it is, that's what I've done.
So.
I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes, sir.
15 feet away from the rear line.
Yes, sir.
So we need five feet of relief.
That's right. I know I can hit that. That's why I'm saying 15.
And you wouldn't need anything for the side.
I wouldn't need anything for the side.
You wouldn't need any relief from the side?
Yes, sir.
Why, because 10? I thought it had to be 15.
Has to be 15.
Has to be 15.
I can come over 10, but you'll bring it 15.
You still have enough room, you have enough room to move laterally, not to be a problem.
You'll need to make sure that your pool guy is rather exact on his measurements.
Yes, understood.
Well, we're measuring it, and then we roped it off.
Yeah, I will measure it three times first, and then he will verify.
So we'll move the ropes when we go home.
Good carpenter. All right, so you're looking to amend your application for no relief from, I'm just trying to talk as a right, no relief from side yard setback.
It's going to have to be exact, though.
And five feet relief from rear yard setback.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I hear a little concern that maybe if they get two feet of side relief just so they had an option, you know, in case they are not measuring exact. Like, are you measuring from your fence? Is your fence the actual property line or?
No.
We left room behind, yeah, there's a lot.
Approximately how much is a lot?
Six feet, right?
Which one are we talking about, the back one? The back, we're about six feet in on property.
How about the side?
The side, it's our neighbor's fence, it's Raymond's fence, and he is right on the line. Exactly on the line.
So I mean, I think I just heard you say, though, you've got to be exact, and I heard people cautioning.
Yeah, if I got to be 15 foot here and 20 foot from the leach field, it's got to be exact.
I mean, you were asked for.
Are you comfortable being exact, or do you want to ask for some relief? I'm not trying to steer you either way, but.
I think it would, I think it's a great, I think that's a smart idea, is to ask for a little relief on the side.
Okay, specifically what?
Two feet. Then I don't have to be as perfect.
So you're looking for five feet of relief from the rear yard setback and two feet of relief from the side yard setback?
Yes.
Okay.
I can get within two feet. I would have to call somebody out to help me with getting it exact. So I feel comfortable with that, thank you.
Okay. Tom, I want to thank you for your board of health expertise.
Me too, me too, thank you.
We all got educated.
I mean, I could make a joke, it was about septic.
I know my, I know my crap.
That's where I was going with that.
Probably heard that before, huh?
Once or twice.
Did you have any other questions or comments?
No, I think that, again, we hit it right where I suspect we should be. I just don't want to grant too much relief and have it come back and backfire sometime down the road.
I agree, I agree. All right, so you, okay, Steve?
Well, Tom covered everything. I mean, I got educated tonight what he was talking about. And putting it at the two feet on the side, five on the rear, still gives you that flexibility. You know, a foot one way, foot the other way, so you'd be safe on it. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did drive by, I saw the white fence.
Hard to see anything else over that. Hard to see anything else over that.
Yeah, it's, it looks like it's a six-foot, six-foot tall fence. And I note that the letter from the closest neighbor, you know, in support, also that there was nobody in opposition of it. Not that that's a deciding factor in things, but I think that's one of the, one of the things that plays into it. I think that's all I had for notes and questions or comments, yes. Thank you.
And everything's been covered, I don't want to beat a dead horse. So that being said, if no one else has any questions or comments or issues to bring up, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
And I'll have a vote.
Yes.
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 And unanimous.
Thank you.
That being said, I'd entertain a motion. The relief that was requested from the applicant was revised to five feet of relief from the rear yard setback, two feet of relief from the side yard setback. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved, unless you would like to hear. Are you looking for someone to provide the motion or are you okay with just the?
Well, I, I'll, I'll, I'll take that as, as a motion.
Fair enough, I'll second it.
All right, and I'll have a vote.
Yes.
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 And that makes it unanimous. Thank you very much, best of luck. With everything including the adoption, that's, you should be applauded.
Thank you, we're a couple months away from getting it all wrapped up, so.
All right, good luck.
Good for you.